In the social media community.
It was very exciting towards the end to be able to speak with the business owner, Ms. Bridget, and we offered an opportunity to continue doing what we were doing. It gave me a sense of accomplishment to show that what we're doing, we're working. We were seeing real time results and Annalita was showing that she was getting more leads. So it was pretty.
All right. Good afternoon. Welcome everyone to the September 8th, 2025 workshop for the Greenville City Council. I'm Mayor PJ Connelly. I've presided over today's workshop. First, I'd like to call our city clerk for the roll call.
Mr. Mayor Connelly.
Here.
Mayor Ferguson Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Ready and here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Mayor Haborn.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Mr. Manzner, any written changes?
Mayor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Scully, seconded by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed to say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move right into new business.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, presentation by Fire Rescue on proposed shift schedule change. I'll call for Deputy Chief Jesse Harris for the presentation. And as he is approaching the podium, I'll make a few comments. What you're going to hear tonight is a very transformative change for our Fire Rescue Department to not only impact our patient care, but to impact the quality of life of each one of our employees within the Fire Rescue Department. We're real excited about this opportunity and it's something that the staff, staff of Fire Rescue has put a lot of work and effort into. And we've had the chance to give you a little hint about what you're getting ready to see. But this is a very transformative change that we're all excited about. And with that being said, I will turn it over to Jesse.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me.
Good afternoon.
So basically, our issue is over the last 10 years, we've just had a lot of turnover within Fire Rescue. Basically to highlight it, we take and get employees, we lose a significant number of them within the first five years of employment. What they're basically doing is going to other agencies that have a lower call volume or lesser work hours. So this kind of is high level, but basically working 24/48 currently, which is a 24-hour shift every three days. So EMS departments aren't regulated by the same FLSA standards and fire services. So we don't get overtime until basically 212 hours in a 28-day cycle, whereas EMS is overtime over 40 hours. So what we're proposing is an adjustment to our schedule to bring us in line with an EMS schedule. So 83% of our call volume last year, 21,500, and some calls, 18,000 of them were EMS calls. So 83% is EMS. So that is the bulk of our work and what we do, but we don't follow that type of schedule. We conducted a survey and a study in 2023 through North Carolina Fire Chiefs Consulting. And so basically what they found was the workforce preferred a 24/72 schedule and it also preferred for us to move towards that in a gradual pattern. So there's a few ways of doing it. Again, this is a gradual phase in of that as opposed to abruptly hiring in a bunch of employees at one time. If you go from three shifts to 47 to four shifts, that would be an additional staffing. And so this will allow us to do it over a delay and a longer period of time as the budget allows. So basically what we're looking for is basically an increase in the work-life balance of healthier workforce. So again, the 24/48, they're also working overtime and things like that, additional class and everything like that. So it just doesn't really give them a lot of time to be able to recover before they come back for another 24-hour period. And so a lot of those 24-hour shifts, they're not getting any sleep or rest, and it takes about 48 hours to recover from that. So if you have a mandatory overtime shift or any kind of training, you just don't get an opportunity to recover before you come back in for work. And so the employees, all 81% was looking for a better work-life balance, and they wanted to take moves that over a gradual period. And they also wanted to be sure that we didn't affect their paid compensation and benefits negatively by that transition. So over the last four years, both we've lost 99 employees. We've actually had one more put aside even 100 now that we've lost over the last four years. And so basically, we're paying one way or another for this. And so to replace a Fire Rescue employee, regardless of what they are, to get back to just a plain firefighter, EMT, not a paramedic, not a driver, it's about a minimum cost of about $100,000 just in training and overtime cost to backfield. So when somebody's out on shift, somebody else has to work in that spot. So that increases the workload on those folks as well as having to retrain somebody. And so basically what it puts in GFR doing is being a training grounds for other places because they train them. And then we're losing a significant portion, 73% within the five-year mark. So that just makes us constant turnover, constant new folks, and just not really providing the service that we would like to deliver. Here's a direct comparison of what that schedule would look like. So on the left, you would see your current 24/48, which again is every three, every third day you would work, and the 24/72 would be every fourth day. So if you notice that, the 24/48 puts us working every single weekend, either a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every weekend. They have no weekends off. So that new 24/72 schedule would give them some three-day breaks in there and some built-in weekends, which better aligns with what our spouses and families are working with still in work. So what the advantages are basically is an increase in the work-life balance would be a retention of our employees and stop losing them because we have a more attractive schedule. And then you have a reduction in the use of sick leave. Currently, the only way to get time off on the weekends is they pick their vacation a year in advance, or they call out sick the day of if something comes up that they need to do this weekend and they just call out sick. And so then that requires somebody else to have to work overtime, which puts them working a second shift on their weekend off. And then obviously going to give us some additional career growth because of the new positions, the additional shift. So it gives employees more options to be able to promote up within the department. And then that would also make GFR one of the larger metros in the state that would make this move and transition, with the only other one I know of right now being Asheville, who's also adopting a 24/72 model. What's allowed us to get here has been the 12 positions that council has given us over the last two years. So that basically gives us a solid foundation to be able to make this move. And so without those 12 positions, we couldn't even start to do this. But what's needed to kind of keep doing this is to keep personnel on. In the interim, we use work groups, which would be similar to their overtime days, in order to take and cover the shift assignments as we go throughout the schedule. Then also, we're adjusting the base employee salary rates to make sure that they're held harmless for any kind of a base rate change due to less work hours. So again, we're going to hold harmless by adjusting our hourly rate. So they'll work less hours, but keep the same annual salary. So that would basically equate to hourly increase. And then we're going to transition using work groups and then we'll put that plan together once we get blessing from council. Staffing requirements where we're currently at, we're running about 45 or 46 per shift and with a total of 138 in operations. And then under the new model, we're going to move to 40 per shift. So that gives us about five or six per day that we're short. And so that's where the work groups are going to be covering. And again, we'll continue adding positions on each year to meet that thing, to meet the in-staffing goal. So the end game of this is to take and get to where we just have the 24/72 with no work groups, but in the interim, we'll have work group days that the folks are working and make up that difference. So basically, all the non-exempt employees be in their work groups. So their salary will be adjusted to the 24/72. And then when they work their work group days, that would be additional salary. So it'd have a temporary salary increase. And then that would go down as they, as we decrease the work group usage. And so this is an example of the work hours. So currently, they're working 240 hours a month, which would be 10 shifts. Under the 24/72, it'll be 168 hours or seven shifts. Then we'll have two work groups for 48 hours. So immediately off the bat, at maximum work group usage, it's still one shift a month less and also getting some weekends off that they currently do not get because of the additional schedule change. And again, the end goal will be to eliminate the work groups and just have the full four shifts and then fully implement it and just be, continue adding positions each year as council can see fit to do so. Currently where we're at, the financial impact there is none. Right now, everything's included within our current budget allocations and our allocated positions. But again, that would be using the work groups that I wouldn't be making maximum utilization of 24/72 because they do still have the work groups. But as we add folks, we reduce that and eliminate Again, we said initially, there'll be a slight increase in some employees paid with the additional work group usage, but that'll go down as we decrease and add on additional personnel. And then the one negative piece being that some employees, they have worked a significant amount of overtime. That would be a little more controlled. So it minimizes that impact. Some folks that make a tremendous amount of overtime, we would control that to minimize that cost. And summary, it's going to give us fewer shifts work through, out of the year. So a lot of employees, just the number of call volume that we're, the calls we run per day and per shift, doesn't decrease that per day, but it decreases into a week because they work less hours per week. So that in turn is less calls ran at the end of the week, end of the month, end of the year per employee, which is going to give them a better recovery time, ability to be in better mental and physical health when they come to work. We'll have an increase in compensation temporarily with the work group usage. And then we should have a decrease in employee error and accidents because they're going to be better rested when they come back to work. There will be more growth and opportunities for our employees. Vanished to the city, keeping our employees rather than training them for somebody else. We keep them here in Greenville. We have a reduction in overtime expenses under this plan. And then we'll have a decrease in academy training costs. So currently, we have two or three academies per year. If we can really keep our folks and not be a training ground, then we decrease the number of academies that we need and can take and operate with what we have and keep our folks and grow them here. Again, fewer folks leaving for other places and in the end, a better service delivery for our customers. With that, I'll take any questions.
Before I take any questions, I'd like to add a few comments. So basically, what this model does, it takes the traditional firefighter schedule, which is an hour, is 56 hours per week, and converts that to a 40-hour schedule, just like all other employees, without impacting the pay. And what that does is it creates a more, that work-life balance provides more hours to replenish the mind and also improves service care. What's allowed us to get to this point is I have to put the things back to city council. Over the last two years, it allowed those, the positions within the department to be increased by 12 positions. We could not be at this point without that, flat out. And so that has put us in the position to move this forward. That will put us on the cutting edge of service provision for Fire Rescue within the state. In order to be able to fully implement this and we get the full benefit of that, it will take a couple more years, a few more years of increasing it, six positions per year. But I feel that that is very easily done within the compounds of our budget as it grows. But again, this is a program that we have presented through the Recruitment and Retention Committee of Fire Rescue. We took it out and that with the departments and the employees and got hands up amongst the group that attended. And we then presented that back to city council. I do believe that we will get a lot of positive recognition, make us a destination. We talked about having it become a destination department. I think this is what is the first step to making us that destination department.
So when are we looking at putting this into?
So as it stands right now, we would, our goal is to implement this March 1st, and which means that we would need to have this approved by council basically as soon as possible. Now, traditionally, what we have done is we brought it to workshop in the first month and then brought it back for council approval the next month. But we really want to get this implemented as quickly as possible, approved by council, so that we can go ahead and start the recruitment process because we will be looking at recruiting a lot of lateral entries, not just relying on the academy. And with lateral entries, you're bringing in individuals that already has many, many years of experience. So time is of the essence. We would like to go ahead and get, and this is what my thought would be, is that what we would like to do is to have this approved. So this is the direction we're moving. And then I bring this back to council at the planned session in January to give you what the progress has been. I've been real upfront with the employees as well as with the council, is that we would never want to implement a plan that we are not ready to implement. We've always got to put the patient care that we're providing and the service we're providing first. So the goal is to get this implemented, start the recruitment process, and give you an update with the full intentions of having this implemented on March 1st.
So can I make a motion to have this on the agenda tonight?
That would be the will of the council. I would say I'd rather bring it back Thursday night if I could.
Well, Thursday night.
Thursday night. If that would be the will of the council to want to go ahead and move that forward.
Yeah.
Then we could add it to the agenda Thursday night. That way, we could get the full present and presentation to the community.
When did you intend to bring it back for?
It'd be next month, October.
You were, you were going to do October, but what we're saying is let's just go ahead and do it this month.
If that's what the will, the council would be.
Okay. I second that motion.
Let's, we got, we got a motion probably second. Daniel, you got that? Mayor Proton, Daniel, seconded by Councilmember Foreman. Got it. Les?
I've got some questions. So let me, I'll make sure I've got my facts straight. So you're saying the city spends about $100,000 per employee?
Conservative.
Okay. And you're telling me we've lost almost 100 employees?
We have lost 100.
Okay. So tell me the math on that.
I can say we're paying for it either way.
I understand, but you see what kind of money we're talking about? Okay. So if I understand correctly, most departments have the 24/48 schedule now. Is that correct?
Correct. Fire departments, yes.
Well, then that kind of begs the question, why are we losing people after five years if other departments have the same policy? It sounds like to me, and I hear this from some of your employees, they talk, we're not paying enough. Would you agree or disagree?
Well, y'all have approved for the pay compensation studies.
I'm not asking what we've approved. I'm asking a very direct question. Are we not paying enough money? Because we're losing that kind of money in training somebody. And we all know whether it's the police department, whether it's the fire department, EMS, or a law practice, when you spend money training somebody, you don't want to lose them. And if we're to lose them, not because other people have 24/7, they have the same thing we have, why are we losing people? I mean, I don't know if we're doing X of interviews, but the complaint I keep hearing about is starting pay and longevity pay to keep people there. And so.
Councilmember Robinson, do you mind if I make a comment?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Me too.
I think this is going to put us more in line with other departments that are emergency departments, which is predominantly what our department does, is emergency services. So it's not comparing apples to apples, comparing us to other fire departments because those departments don't function in the same way. It's going to put us more in line with other emergency departments, which I think is.
For comparison, if GFR didn't do Firebase EMS, we'd be running about 5,000 calls a year instead of 21,000 calls per year.
And I've got a comment on those ones.
Also, that makes you be paid more.
Which is that when we, that we've had a tax revaluation a couple of years ago. And I know that there were some people who said that we should go to revenue neutral, revenue neutral budget. This is one of the reasons that we, that we had, I think we kept about two cents, two, two and a half cents of that revaluation. We still dropped the tax rate almost 10 cents, but we kept a couple of cents out of that revaluation. This kind of issue was why we did that, because it has allowed us to hire EMS, fire personnel, six last year and six this year.
I think what we got to do is we got to look at it in combination, that it's not just pay, it's not just work schedule, it's a combination of both. And what we're doing is we're continuing, but the last, the last four years, we've increased employees' pay by 20%, over 20%.
Right.
So the pay is increasing, but what we're going to do is we're going to level it out. So now, the majority of our comparisons are EMS schedules with 40 hours per week. Now we're converting to a 40-hour schedule, plus what Jesse just basically said is that the pay for our employees is going to initially go up by about $6,000 a year by converting to this schedule.
The other thing is, what I saw in some stats, and correct me if I'm not wrong, the number of calls that we've gone up in and our number of staff have not gone up equally proportionately, right? So we're having to staff a lot more calls with a lot less people and we're losing 100. We've seen this happen to us in the police department, right? We got what, almost 30 down at one point, 30, 32 people down. When your house is on fire or somebody needs a medical emergency, and we're leading the state in accident, which is a horse of another different color, we don't need to be down. Instead of adding six a year, we need to start adding 12 and get more.
Were they welcome there?
And so that, that leads me, my next thing, at one point, this city, we were number one in pay in the entire state for police. Number one, we're not. And so if you want to get the best, you got to pay top dollar. And when we're having more calls and we got less people, that's endangering our citizens in terms of fire, in terms of medical emergencies. And on top of that, we were leading the state almost in top four or five with accidents. They happen to go to calls. So number one, I'm all for this 24/7 too mentally and physically. But number two, we need more people to take up the slack, to take off the pressure. So as a council, we need to certainly say, instead of six a year, let's be aggressive and let's do 12.
I'll tell you what, if we could get 12 into this, to this next year's budget, we would absolutely be killing it with the Fire Rescue Department as far as being the, putting us in a position to have it fully implemented and increasing the employee route and increasing employee, patient safety at the same time. That should be our goal. And the fact that within the, we are now in a process of going ahead and starting the design right now, this is coming to you in the next couple of months, the design for the next fire station. We're not going to wait 15 years for the next fire station like we did between six and seven. My goal is to have that station built ASAP so that we can impact the magnitude of how the calls are distributed.
And we can't talk about a revenue neutral budget when we are trying to add six new staff.
So I think that we each.
But I think part of it is, we pay those going through training, right? And they get top-notch training and then they leave.
Five years and they're gone.
Not, not even five years.
I think you said average was five of the stats.
Seventy, seventy within five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, within five years, but.
We are certainly, we are certainly moving in the right direction here.
Absolutely.
And the quicker we can get those 12, those 12 positions, the better off we're going to be. And I will be advocating for that.
I don't want to be in a position like where we're in under Ted Salvo. We got 37 people that you need and we can't serve our citizens.
I can assure you that 12 positions will be in.
Well, I think 12 will be a great start. And we need to look at the pay and revenue neutral. How we've solved this problem, which is real simple, we've got to grow Greenville. Because when we add to our tax base and we can tax like the. Because when we add to our tax base and we can tax like the cross, so we added on 10th Street, it's a $30 million build out that we passed. It was right outside your neighborhood, Mary. We get to tax that, so the more we grow, the more we get taxed, the bigger our budget grows, and we ain't got to raise tax.
We don't raise the tax, we drop the tax.
I know, that's a good thing. We can probably drop it more for Greenwell, that's a horse of different colors.
Yeah, that's, that's a completely different.
I'm behind the 24/72. I want us to be aggressive about trying to give you the people you need and the resources. Because it's a tough job to have and what you have to deal with and the calls you go to. We need, we don't need to be penny pinching when it comes to fire EMT and the police.
12 additional positions would completely speed the process up significantly.
And plus that lets the fire department know we got their back, which is what we need to do also.
I have a question, if it's still appropriate to ask a question. Unless, Monica, I think you had, do you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so. Okay, this, trying to do the math, this brings it from, I think you said about a 52-hour week to a 48-hour week, is that right? Or 40, do I have that backwards?
Currently 56, now we're bringing it down to 42.
Okay, 56 down to 42, okay. Because I got 48 average, but the math, we'll get that worked out later.
Yeah, 42 would be the seven shifts over a 28-day work cycle, which is what they're, they're averaging out as a 28-day cycle.
Okay, and then, and then the pay is commensurate.
You just pay money and Michael's on it.
I know, really, pay, the pay has been adjusted, as you said, harmless.
Correct, the annual salary has stayed the same, so that would be an hourly increase because of the less hours that are worked. So it would be a several dollar per hour increase because of the lesser hours for the same annual salary.
This is a revenue plan.
Even with the 12, even with the 12?
I do have a quick question.
Currently, 12 is good, let's move on.
You stated that people put in their time of year in advance. Have they, anyone lost that time due to a shortage?
They don't lose time for it, so basically they just have to work back on overtime to fill any vacancies in there. So when folks are off on vacation, somebody calls out sick or we're short staffed, those people have left, and somebody else is working overtime. So that increases that 56 by that 24-hour shift of overtime. For some folks, that's 72 hours in a 24, or a two-week pay period. They'll work 72 hours, three additional shifts in that two-day, two-week cycle.
So what I, let me try and understand there. We are moving a presentation to Thursday night, add this to the agenda so we can go ahead and get it approved, which will speed up our ability to market this.
That was the motion in a second.
Okay, let's do it.
I have a comment.
Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I'll just remind you, if there's consensus at a workshop typically, you don't vote on things. So you can vote, but you don't have to if there's consensus.
Is there any issue with the public, with having a public hearing on this? Is this subject to a public hearing? Do we need to provide a notice and all for that?
Councilmember Willis.
Thank you, I just wanted to give a huge thank you to the staff. I see a great example of leadership here because as you mentioned, this has been a process that started way back when. You've mentioned about the adding of the positions over time. But not only that, you guys have provided us with briefings. We've been able to go to Fire Station 7 and hear the same presentation and ask all the questions that we wanted to ask of you. So I was already sold, I was already informed, I already knew my decision when I, when you were walking up here. So being able to know the work that was put forth, all the briefings that you guys did to make sure that we were aware, the research that's gone into it. And something that really I was appreciative of was in the meeting, of course, we had the new chief there, we had members of the, the city manager's office there. But we also had the staff who could tell us anything they want to tell us about the retention committee that you guys have. And just kind of be open and honest about what this process is going to look like and what the rollout is going to look like. And that's leadership, and I appreciate that, and it helps us to make an informed decision so we can be ready to go.
I will say that anytime you bring employees into a meeting with council, you're taking a risk. But I told the employees upfront, you've got the green light, don't hold back. Because this is not just about, this is not just about the service that we provide. It's not just about the balance and life balance that you have. It's also about creating trust that the council, the city manager's office, is doing everything they can to look out for the best interest of the department. And I can tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt that that department feels the love of not only this council, but also the city manager's office to do what it needs to do to make us that destination department. Playing something.
And their voices have been heard.
Yes, I will mirror what Portia said, and with the thank you. I came in already ready to support you guys, because all the questions that I needed to ask was asked at the briefing. I don't need to say anything for Ginger. But I definitely want to say to you guys that this is going to be a good change for quality of life. Not just for the firemen, but for their families, and that's what I'm excited about.
Well, Ginger, make sure you get what we spoke about, okay? Don't miss it.
Ginger, I'll give you a call.
I will too.
I'd like to see again a thumbs up for consensus.
You just see the thumb?
I'd give you mine, but I don't get a vote.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on. So now we shift to an update on the discussion of potential changes in the standards for BAR 2022 and microbrewery uses. Now call for our chief planner, Shante Gooby, and as she is coming to the podium. One, we were reviewing this, basically we had three parts to it. We had the microbreweries, we had the downtown, we had the citywide alcohol. It became too voluminous, so what we've done is we've split this up into two parts.
Say that word again?
Voluminous.
You got that, Ginger?
So we split this up into two different presentations. Today, we're going to talk about alcohol downtown, the citywide, and then next month, we're going to talk about the microbreweries.
Thank you, sir.
Muchas gracias.
You should be getting two packets, should say series one and series two. I have one large size map if we need to look at it. You don't have a lot of room on your table, so we'll only pull that map out if we need to. And then I'm going to start the presentation and then you can sort of follow along with the maps. I'll start with series one. All right, so we're going to get started then, here's my clicker. So this is a follow-up to your August workshop, I wasn't here, but we'll kind of come back up to speed. And we're going to, I'm going to go over just a quick preview, a little bit of this stuff should look familiar to you. Again, tonight, we're only going to talk about the BAR 2022 use. We gave you some prompts, you had some more discussion, and then we have made these series of maps to kind of help illustrate, if you do this, then this is what it will look like. These were the prompts that you had from August, so again, BAR 2022. Would you like to increase the maximum size? If so, what size? Would you like to allow this use outside of downtown? And if you did that, would you include separation distances from residential uses? And so series two is going to cover that piece when we get there. So again, the first series of maps is for the current eligible area right now. And then series two is going to be maps of the citywide area. And I'll show you sort of the method to our madness of how we did this. A couple of caveats with these maps. This was a ton of work on our poor computers that were almost smoking as my mapper was doing all of this. So in order to make it digestible and to actually give you some output, we had to pull some things out to help with these maps. So what we did, when, if we're looking at a separation distance and we have a large property that could be subdivided in order to basically void that separation distance, we left it out. We left out vacant properties. And the other thing is, we left out any kind of government-owned property. So that would be the city, Pitt County, state, and ECU. Those typically are going to stay in the hands of the government. So we left those out again to make this much more digestible. So this is, I thought the best way to start is what do we even allow for the bars? Because the bar is our most intensive use. So this is showing you the current standard. So the row for bar gives you the districts it's allowed in, special use permit, of course. We have the 500-foot rule, but as we always say, it's three prongs to the 500-foot rule. For bars, it's 500 feet from one, from one another, 500 feet from single-family districts, 500 feet from conforming single-family districts. There is no size limit. For BAR 2022, as it stands today, it's only allowed in the eligible area. There is no separation distance, but the size is capped at 2,000 square feet. So this is showing you, and I thought I deleted series three, but don't look at that. That's nothing to worry about. So now what we're going to look at with series one is just going to be the downtown area. And then we've looked at the different size limits, which we did at 3,500, 4,000, 4,500, and 5,000 square feet. So that would be the maximum size, and we've got those maps illustrated for you. And then for series two, we've looked at it citywide. We looked at the same zoning districts as a bar. We did two prongs of the 500-foot rule, so not from each other, just from single-family districts, single-family dwellings. But we still kept those size limits for you. So I'm going to walk you through how this works. Hopefully you'll find it very easy once you figure out how we did it. So if you'll look in your packet on series one, map one, this is the current buildings that are eligible right now today, okay? So these are buildings that are 2,000 square feet or less. And if you will watch sort of the counter up here, the right hand is a table. And that's going to tell you every time we sort of move the notch, what does that create? So if we go to map two, what we've done now is we're looking at 3,500 square feet. So if you look up at our table, it's telling you that under 2,000, we had 65, I'm going to call them buildings. If we move the maximum size to 3,500, we've added, we've added 69 buildings. So that's an additional 69 in the fold. If we move up another notch to 4,000, then now we have added 14. So we're up to 148. And then we did 4,500, that would bring us to 160. Oh, and I should have told you, I'm sorry. Every time I move up a notch, the new properties in blue are the ones showing up. So that, that way, if you want to see what happens at 3,500, you can go back and look at the blue properties. I'm sorry I didn't point that out at the beginning. And then this is 5,000, so 5,000 adds 11, that would bring you to 171. I would call it opportunities is the best way to look at it. For your series two maps.
Hey, Shante, can I just make a statement here? So just to summarize that, just to go up from 2,000 to 3,500, that's an additional 16 square meters, that's what you're doing. To go from 3,500 to the full 5,000 would be an additional 37 on top of that. So that gives you an indication, now this doesn't include, like you said, the vacant properties or anything like that that was to be subdivided. These are just the ones that meet the standard.
And then for series two, we've excluded the series one area, so to not mix and match. So what we just looked through is not included on this next set of maps. You can look through those and see how we added the size. And I just have a table here in front of you of how we add those. Again, we're looking at the same zoning districts as bars, but we're adding separation distances. So we're taking 500 feet from single-family districts. We're taking it from 500 feet from conforming single-family homes and the size limit. So when you put those things together at 2,000 square feet, you have 32 properties. If you move the maximum size to 3,000, you're at 68. And you see how it just keeps going away, going up? So you've got 4,000, 4,500, and 5,000. That gives 151 opportunities outside of the downtown area. You've got maps, they can be a little hard. I have one, well, actually I have two large maps if you want to see anything specific. I know your table's really crowded. And putting this map on this slide does not really help you at all. And then we're right back to where we started from, which is a lot of the issues with the BAR 2022 use was it was too small. It was limited to the downtown area only. And also, it does have more rules and regulations than a bar right now. The issues that probably most of you have heard about and staff has consistently dealt with is when you have an establishment that wants, really doesn't have a lot of food sales, but they want the ABC permit, wine, beer, and spiritous liquor. And you have a use such as an arcade, a golf simulator, and even microbreweries that as far as planning is concerned, you would be considered a bar because that's the most intensive use. And of course, we have some people who say, but I'm just, I just want a golf simulator and I just want to have the ability to sell whiskey, you know, only off chance. Well, we have no control over how much you sell, so at the end of the day, we have to treat it with the heaviest hand, which is the bar use.
And not ancillary use?
No, ancillary use is only wine and beer.
Okay.
Spiritous liquors are not included in that. And then the last one, microbreweries, they make beer on-site, they can sell beer and wine. Typically, beer and wine is coupled together because of the alcohol content, right? You step up when you get to liquor. And we'll get to the microbrewery, we're going to. And this is the piece we're going to pick up next month, right? Because it really starts to get way down into minutia. And so we're, we're bringing these very same prompts to you. You have maps that show you when you start moving the scale, what happens. And then, you know, based on what you want to do tonight, if you wish to change things, then we would obviously need you to tell us what you want to change and how you want to change it. That would be a text amendment, it would go to PNZ, and then it would come to council eventually. If you are able to come to some sort of agreement tonight, we can get that in the fold. If you want to wait for the microbrewery item to come up in October, we're in no rush. What we do need is just some direction of how do you want to proceed. Oh, that's the end of my slides, so I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to expand the size restriction in downtown? We've got maps that show everything from 3,000 up to 5,000. So then second, do you want to expand it outside the downtown? And we've got the maps that shows you how that would be impacted.
I'd like to sort of, if I may, sort of frame our conversation. First of all, Shante, I need to commend you and all your staff, these maps are awesome.
That is my mapper with me saying, can you do this? So that, that belongs to Tim in my office.
This, these are really excellent maps and the numbers, it's got exactly the information we need. Thank, I just want to thank you very much for that. My thoughts on this are, we've talked about our microbreweries and I appreciate that we are going to talk about them next month. I want to be real clear that they've made a significant investment in their business and that we want to look for ways to support them, make sure that, that they are able to continue doing business here because they bring a lot to our community. But specifically focusing then on just bars tonight. I think that before we go tinkering with the size, we should look at. I think that before we go tinkering with the size, we should look at trying this citywide and let other people have an opportunity at this. It's been confined to the downtown area, plus we've got the 500-foot separation in place throughout our city. My thinking is, before we go tinkering with bar 2022, which so far has been successful, let's look at expanding it to the rest of the city, let other folks have a chance at it. Because I think that when we look at making, you know, expanding the size, do we need 171 bars downtown? You know, to me, the issue here is let's open this up to the entire city. We have a good model. I know our staff spent a lot of time developing the bar 2022 standards. So let's let it go into effect throughout our city. We have some consistency, and we see how it works.
Do we know how many bars have opened up under bar 22 with 2,000 square foot?
Two.
Two, and that's been how many years now?
Two, two.
Twenty-two, three years. So I don't think that's a success rate by any.
It's been limited to downtown.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's only two.
With one pending.
One pending.
I mean, three in downtown? I mean, how many bars do we, how many more bars do we need downtown? I think the issue is where are these bars opening up? You look at, you know, someone might want to have a neighborhood bar where they can walk there and not have to worry about driving home, there's something in their neighborhood. And to me, that's, that's kind of where the shift can take place, and we can see something more meaningful for our community happen, rather than just saying, let's have more bars downtown.
So what you just stated, just to make sure everybody understands, but I think what Marion is saying is that you take the current bar 2022, make it across the entire city with the current restriction of 2,000 square feet, plus you'd have to add in the separation from the single family and all that, which brings you to the map of it would create 32 additional locations across the city, leaving the downtown center.
And this is kind of an off-the-cuff question. But of the two that have opened, have we had any complaints with them for violence or underage drinking or anything like that? I don't know, A B C, I don't know.
Chantay, what are the two?
One is Carolina Icy, because they wanted to do spiritous liquor. They not had that piece added yet.
Right.
And then the second one is Agave, which is Shereen's building down here on Cotan. And they are very close to being open, so they're, they're pretty close.
Two permits with zero business.
Because I understood that the problem that brought this to us was because that the limitation of 2,000 square feet was just not enough to do anything economically. I think that's what you said.
I think that's my point, yes, sir. That 2,000 square feet is just not going to get it done. It's just not in the space operator business. Where you need storage, you need restroom facilities, you need some backup house prep facilities. Even if it's just a bar, they need someplace to cut fruit and wash dishes and stuff.
You said your restaurant is?
My restaurant's 2,600 square feet, so it would be too big. And I'm scrambling for space all the time. I do not have enough of it.
Cook a lot of food, and good food on my head. We're talking about a bar.
Correct.
Which, you know, again, we have a model, we've hardly fleshed it out. And when we say bar 2022, I think it was late in 2022 before this was actually created. Yeah, so we've had, barely had two and a half years to see how this works, and we're talking about tinkering with it. I say, let's get a try citywide, let's see what happens. I think that let these establishments that want to, they're planning to open up downtown, let's see how they do. And then if, you know, we come back and say, no, we got to increase the size, and we've got to tinker with it in some other way, we can, we have more evidence at that point of how it's working.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, even though we've got up to 65 properties in the downtown area that qualify for 2,000, only two and perhaps a third or even in that, and not yet.
And the figure that we threw out last time was about 3,500?
3,500.
3,500, excuse me, square feet. And then that would give us under series one, about 134 across the city.
No, just downtown.
No, that would just.
Just downtown. Okay, that's, yeah.
It's also obvious why, when you look at the map, with the parcels that are available, they're not on major corridors. These are not places people are going to be willing to invest in this moment in time.
Exactly.
And that's why they're not operable, because there's not foot traffic there to support a business like a bar.
But outside of big use.
And let me say, you know, we all know we got the greatest staff in the entire world working with cities. But when we developed bar 2022, it wasn't a rocket science map that we used. It was a starting point. That 2,000 square foot was a starting point, just to see how we would move, how it would be impacting the downtown.
I just want to say, I want to be as careful as we can with this, because I don't want to open the floodgates and welcome bad actors who would run businesses that would put our citizens at risk and cause crime in the area and take us in the opposite direction. I don't want that. But I think where we're at now is not the place where it's doing what we wanted to do and spreading economic growth and welcoming good businesses to the area and supporting businesses that already exist. And I think right now we have the opportunity to really grow the downtown area. And with the citywide stuff, I, that's also a slippery slope, and, you know, I really want to be as careful as we can be. But I also think we need to begin considering and planning for entertainment zones that are outside of the downtown area so that our older citizens have somewhere to enjoy and so that we're dispersing that activity in the wider areas so that there's less opportunity for bad things to happen.
Do we need more bars downtown? And I appreciate what you said. I mean, I'm genuinely interested. Do we need more bars downtown? To me, when I look at entertainment needs, we really need more entertainment possibilities throughout our city. Because, I mean, downtown bars seem, we seem to have, go to my home.
Well, I think, I think the ones that we have, we've really created a monopoly system, and the ones that we have are not being really well taken care of. For the most part, we have some really great quality businesses, don't get me wrong, but some of them have been there forever and are kind of locked in and have, you know, no possibility of competition that's going to lift them out of where they're at now, in my opinion.
Because when I look at downtown, and you were talking about, we want to invigorate and continue to see our downtown grow, that was, that has been the issue for decades, is that our downtown only had bars because they're a very profitable model. At least they were. And I, you know, we haven't talked about that side of things, but, but the way they were able to operate previously was a very profitable model, and that was kind of like the path of least resistance when you come to Greenville and you want to open up a business downtown. And what we've done by adding restrictions such as size and some other, you know, the whole bar 2022, that I think the goal was to allow bars to operate downtown if they, you know, follow these guidelines. That was a way to say, we want to allow new bars, but we want to do it in a tempered manner because we also want to have other types of businesses downtown. When we start opening up property to bars, we reduce the possibility of having other kinds of businesses, such as the scullery, such as clothing stores, such as, you know, all the other kinds of businesses we have. And to me, that's, that's why I'm saying, well, let's just open it up to the city and see how, to the larger city and see how that works, rather than saying our downtown is a bar area only. I'd like to see our downtown have, you know, bookstore, I don't know.
I'm telling you, you need to stop agreeing with me.
Are you agreeing with me?
He was.
Yeah.
What is happening here?
I'm telling you.
Maybe you agree with her.
So with that being said, clearly, what is your suggestion?
I mean, I don't think, you could, you could continue. I think there's things that we can do to change downtown, right? But I mean, I don't think you're going to change the downtown until you open it up, right? We've restricted that bars go only in this area and this area only. And by doing that, you're basically cutting out all the other, the commerce opportunities downtown. I mean, there's nothing else that can go there. And then the problem that you have is the hours that people go to those establishments that are downtown are between 10:00 PM at night and 2:00 AM in the morning. And so essentially, when you walk past their doors, it says closed, which rightfully so, nobody's going in there and drinking at 8:00 AM in the morning, right? And so what you're doing is, if you restrict them, that's the only type of businesses ever going to be there. If you want to have retail businesses down here, if you want to have different opportunities of different types of businesses down here, you can't just restrict it and say that it can only be in this particular area. That being said, I think you need to be smart about when you go citywide because you don't want different types of things popping up all over there. I mean, we think about all the positive things that can happen. You know, I think one that you could say is maybe like a Dave and Buster's. I don't know if that would fit the criteria. They serve a very small amount of food at their establishment. The majority of their sales is arcades and liquor sales. But, you know, that's what we think of. But the flip side of that is, I don't think anybody wants next to their neighborhood a 5,000-square-foot club, right?
Right.
So as you look citywide, you need to make sure that you're smart about it. But I think if you ever want to change the dynamics of downtown is you're going to have to change the makeup where you only allow bars downtown. That's my personal opinion. When we went through bar 2022, I would think I was the only person that said, don't just restrict it down here. You're going to have to find a way to let it branch out if you want to see downtown grow, because we're essentially doing the same thing over and over again. And that's what we're doing. All we're doing is changing it and allowing more bars to be in the same geographic area. And I mean, from a market standpoint, only a certain amount. I mean, look at, look at our city. Like, look how many, how many gas stations that we have, look how many car washes that we have. At some point, some of those are going to fail, right? And so if you have them all in the same exact area, I mean.
Will you go throw that one more time?
Yeah. I mean, seriously. I mean, but that's, that's just capitalism. I mean, that's the way, that's the way it works. That's, that's the economy. I mean, that's, that being said, that makes the market more competitive and it drives down prices, because the more that you have, the more opportunities you have and the more competitive that they have to be to stay in business, so.
I think, if I remember, when we were talking about this, the concept of it was, I think at the time, we had those problems back in 99. It was a perfect storm. You had 26, 28 bars, and now it went down because the college kids can't legally drink, and now that law's actually enforced, a free force of the crowd can't drink. And to say, if you want to go spend money in a college bar and you got $250,000, go throw it in the river, because that's what, that's what kind of profit you make out of it. The cash is on the door. But anyway, I, I thought we were trying to figure out a way to have an alcohol establishment that would serve working-class people, that after work want to go have a nice drink, but they don't want to sit with a bunch of college kids in 519 and hear the crazy music of some kid throwing up in the corner. They want to be able to have a nice drink, a glass of wine or whatever, and then go home at 10 o'clock, you know, 9:30. And that's what I thought we were trying to do, and that's why we struggle with that. We won't, we don't want a bar like a college bar, but we'd like to have a place where people can come and enjoy their favorite beverage or whatnot, or a glass of wine. And, you know, that bar is going to shut down probably at 10 o'clock and go home, because that clientele's already going home and not, not waiting for it, because the college crowd normally comes out at about 11:30, 12:00.
But we can't say what you can and can't do in your bar.
Well, I know, but I thought that's what.
And when you expand it to citywide, we can have it more like a neighborhood bar.
I also just want to make comment that our, our community's changed a tremendous amount since 1999. That was a different community. We have 100,000 people now, we have a hotel downtown, we have lots of great restaurants. And if we want, you know, people to move here to work and stay here, we need fun things for adults to do. And I'm not talking about college bars. I know, I totally agree with everything y'all are saying, but we need to do both things at the same time. And I think, you know, our city's changing.
Well, for me, this is so far outside of my wheelhouse. I've probably talked to Nae till she was blue in the face, understanding this bar thing, because I don't drink and I don't understand desire to. But what I do, and I don't judge desire to, all my friends do. I have, since I was in school, been to DD. That was, that was my, my role, and I held that proudly. But first of all, I don't see it as economic development, but I do see it as supporting development, right? So they're two, those are two different things to me. So as we're talking about it, and we say it's a form of development, I'm like, huh, I don't see that as development because, you know, you're not getting livable wages and there are only so many jobs that are going to be offered in that sector. So, but I do see it as a support structure for development as our city continues to grow. I do think because of the circumstances back then, then a lot of decisions might have been a little more emotional. And when we make decisions in that manner, when, you know, I talk to my sons about this, anything that we're doing, the more emotional you are, the less practical you need. So if we're looking at it 100%, and you're 70% emotional, then you're making 30% of your decisions with a practical mindset. And so I, I do think that we might have been, and this is me saying from the outside looking in, we might have been too stringent at that time by saying 2,000 square feet. I just don't know what that magic number is, right? So I did own a business at the corner of Dickinson and Eighth. And I chose not to offer alcohol, but if I did, as I've been listening to you all talk, put a bar in there, then it would have taken up most of my space. So, and then as it relates to expanding it around the city, I have one question. If, if, if we make it citywide, are there rules that can be put in place to loitering? I mean, I know that, you know, we don't, we don't support loitering, but from what I've heard from things that have happened around the city, whenever there is an issue, it's never usually an issue inside the bar for the patrons that are actually going into the business. It's usually something that's happening outside of the facility due to loitering. So with that being said, Chantay or Michael, whoever.
Yeah, I would, I would say that usually falls back on the business owner outside of being able to restrict it per ordinance. I would say we'd have to research that from a legal perspective.
Is that, is that, that increase how books is called in a sense, too? So can, can a loitering rule be attached to it that we hold a business owner accountable to ensuring that, say, during operating hours or during operating hours, definitely? Because one of the things, even though we didn't offer alcohol, you were not able to loiter outside my building. We had a rule, and my guys enforced it. You either inside or you're gone. If you were in the parking lot for more than 10 minutes, somebody was out there telling you to get up out of there. So, and then after we were closed, if we had a dance event or something like that, 30 minutes, after 30 minutes, the parking lot should have been cleared. And so is that something that?
I mean, we had to research, do you give you a thorough answer? You know, a business owner can't obstruct the sidewalk and have people out of their business 30-deep, blocking people from, you know, passing on the sidewalk. But we would need to research and make sure we're not violating first person's constitutional rights if they're on private, on public property, on public property, but, so, no.
But is my question at least making sense?
Would we even need a new, or would we even need to add that to the ordinance? Because we already have loitering rules, and we've got, one of the things about bar 2022 is that it's got the security requirements. So that should come about with the security requirements in the bar 2022.
Yeah, I think the beauty of the, of the bar 2022 is that it creates like not only the security, but it also means that you got to bring it up to code, you got to meet all these other specifications, which reduces the potential that someone's just going to throw a business together and start selling alcohol.
Other thing is, I feel like the rest of the city, all parts, and I've always said, you know, it'd be great, you got to be all over the bar equal, that they've got a monopoly on the bars, and I think that's not fair to other sides of our city, the east, west, north and south. And so, you know, like a little community bar like you're talking about, where you can walk to and have a drink and maybe walk home. So I think if we do it, I think it needs to be citywide. What I struggle with is how big or small do we go? That's what bothers me. Because we can put the teeth in it, but just to give you an example, the restaurant that's on Greenville Boulevard, right, that backs up to my neighborhood, remember the complaints they have of noise? And that, that was a restaurant bar, and there were all the controversy around that.
Is that Boulevard?
Yeah, yeah. And that, like, we just apparently got away. But I mean, that's the stuff I worry about, and that probably wouldn't have qualified because it was too close to the neighborhood with the feet restriction. But that's my concern is we, is, you know, I don't go to these bars and stuff like that. But like, I'd go to Dino's, have a good meal. That's a neighborhood restaurant slash bar, but I get people who want to go have a couple of drinks. And plus, like you pointed out, I don't think it's economic development, but it's an amenity that we need for people who come here and want to go. Like my associate's 27-years-old, he would like to go have a drink, but he doesn't want to go hang out with the college kids, you know? So I think it's an amenity that we need, I think we need it statewide, excuse me, citywide.
Right.
Watch it, watch it.
I just wonder...
I just struggle with the size of it. How big do we go or how small?
And is size the way, because when you, when you're talking, I, I see what you're saying. And oddly enough, I fully agree. I think, I know. I think the thing is, the thing is, is size the way, because we can't tell a business, you've got to cater to this kind of crowd, you've got to, you know, attract a certain kind of staff member, you've got to help with our economic development by being attractive to international companies. We can't say those things. So why are we looking at size as the way to get, to get to that point? If that's, if those were our goals, let's see how...
I don't think size is the way to get to that point. I think they just want a reasonable size that someone can run a business and have enough space to do with.
Well, I think if you...
Yeah, and that may be, I don't know. I feel like once we open up those floodgates, as they say, you, you cannot put the toothpaste back in the tube.
I think size does play somewhat into it. I'll give an example. At, at the mall, there's a bar called Erenbys. It's basically the bar and probably not as from me to you to walk through. You can sit there and you can get a drink. And it's kind of like an area that stays busy from about 7:30 to 10 or 11, and then is gone. Two bartenders. And talking to some of them, it's amazed because they're, they're charging high-end drinks and they get a high-end clientele and they make $400 or $500 in tips a night each bartender because they're not competing with 10 people. But it's a small family bar and people go to it, have a drink after they eat dinner or something on the waterfront. They can have a couple of drinks and they go home. So I think that's kind of, but you know, the neighborhood bars.
That's small, though. That's small.
Yeah, it's, it's small. That's why I say I struggle with how big or small do we make it. That's the part that...
When I read the room, I think that, I'm feeling that there's a consensus to make it citywide. And let me just say, you are in control of this. Just like with Bar 2022, you started out at 2,000. You, you could do the same thing citywide. Outside of the downtown area, you could start with the same restrictions they have with Bar 2022 and start at 2,000 and see how it goes.
Typically, when you do research, you only change one variable. Because that way you can know what's the effect that this one variable has had. So I say we, we go about this one variable at the time. Before we look at the size, let's make it citywide.
Now, if you did go citywide, start with the same restrictions that we have on Bar 2022, plus the distance restrictions, then, all right, so that settles that question. I have to go back to, what about the downtown area? Do you, what's the, what's the, feel the groups feel about making any changes to that?
I don't think downtown, my personal opinion is downtown doesn't need to change because we do, I, I can't imagine that number of buildings being, having the option to be a bar. That's, that's, that's a huge number. And even though I was listening to what Liz and Matt were saying, that they're not near the major corridor, if it's somewhere that you want to go, you will be intentional about going there. And again, using the place that I have, for example, you know, people came from, a lot of my business, I would say 25% of it was here, but most of my business came from outside of our county, other parts of the state and outside of the state. So when someone, when that's where they want to go, they will make it a point to get there. And so if we open up that many more options, I think I only imagine what the police would have to deal with.
So, so with that being said, what I, what I kind of gather from the seven, I've heard the mayor, Marion and Tanya basically say, keep the downtown the same and expand it to the citywide. And if we use the same restrictions as city, citywide, then it would be at 2,000 square feet. Matt, I think Matt's still out there. Let, let's do something with the downtown.
I don't think that really does anything. I mean, respectfully, I don't think that we would pull any permits on that.
And 3,000 would do anything either, or whatever.
I don't know. I think, I think 3,000 would. How big is the Aji? Do you know?
Who is Aji?
Aji, sweet Aji. Any other?
It's a store.
Anyway.
International store and bar.
I also look forward to hearing the presentation about the microbreweries. I think we've spent enough time. I'd like to think about it some more. Does anybody else?
I just, I want to answer about the loitering piece. That, that's important to me. We, and you guys are not aware, but we recently had a situation with a small business in the community, basically like one of those hole-in-the-wall type businesses. And again, they, they were having major issues outside the building. It wasn't the patrons that were actually going in the building. They weren't even offering alcohol. But it wasn't the patrons, right, Chief, that were going in the building that were causing the issues. It was the people that were loitering outside the building. And we had to do a community intervention, which seems to have taken care of it over the last few weeks. But the issue was loitering more than it was patrons.
So start with that.
We can advise you about this, but just like off the cuff, loitering is already a criminal offense. So if there's been loitering, police can be called, they can be arrested, they can charge. All that can happen already. Where you get into the problem is trying to put that burden on a private individual or business owner to go into a public parking lot and enforce that. You're generally not going to be able to do that. And that creates a whole bunch of issues, particularly when you're talking about people drinking alcohol and that possible confrontation. So generally, what you want is collaborative kind of working business owners, police enforcing the existing laws and kind of there. There are trespass agreements and things we can do and allow them to go and get people off if they're near their property and things like that. We can explore all these possibilities for you. But if you're just saying a business owner operating a bar and trying to personally enforce loitering there, that's problematic. Outside of reporting...
I guess what I'm saying, can it be like after a certain period of time, are you that you're trespassing?
Public property.
Okay, okay.
So you see what I'm saying? It's, it's like, do they have the authority to even do that? And you won't be in that position to try to enforce it. Now, what they can say is, this is right in front of my business, they can call the police and say, these people are problematic. You can try to have this kind of like task force meetings with your foreman, you say this is their problem. You can have those trespass agreements again, as we mentioned, where it's kind of like a preemptive strike, a rush to, if they're here to kind of get them off. But as far as just public land, can a business owner stop someone from standing in the parking lot? It's kind of a problem. Like, you know, you start getting into kind of regulatory terms. And also think you really want to err on the side of caution if people drink and have a business owners possibly confront people that might be, you know, bad actors or something along those lines. Because I mean, you don't, you don't want people that are essentially trying to do the right thing that are now in that circumstance. So they're gonna get hurt or, you know, it just adds to the risk. So what we've advised historically, at least in recent months, is collaboratively meeting the city staff, meeting with police, trying to make sure they have contacts, make sure they can call when there's somebody who is concerned, making sure charges are filed or arrests are done if those people stay there.
So we can, we can solidify that and bring back that information. I'll ask one more time, is there anything else that council needs to help them make a decision on the bar, on alcohol citywide in downtown? It's not, it might be...
I guess my question is, we spoke about earlier, what effect is this gonna have on our police department? And if we have, I'm, I'm in agreement with it going citywide. But I guess we need to look at, I know with some of the bars, there's some training, some...
Yeah. And I think that last month, Chief Tyndall, basically, I mean, I put words in your mouth, but you basically said it would be incremental.
Right.
No way to know, I'm sorry, would you say?
So if there's no other additional information that you need in order to make a decision, you just want another month to talk, think about it?
Yeah, I wonder if Chantay could like change the colors.
So is there anything else you need from us?
I don't need anything else. I'm good.
So next month, we'll be prepared at least to try to make a decision on alcohol.
I think we're gonna discuss microbreweries. I'm sorry for speaking from my phone, sorry.
But we will not go back and rehash this. We will not go back and re-present it.
Can we do all at the same time? In other words, can we take action?
Yeah, oh yeah, you can do it all. You can make a decision all at the same time.
Okay.
I just want, because we will spend our time, staff will spend his time presenting the microbreweries.
Next month, yeah.
From there, council will have to provide us direction of what the next steps will be.
Yeah, so let's do microbreweries next month and then we can take the whole package up together when it's time to take action.
Sound like a winner?
Winner.
All right.
Winner, winner, chicken dinner.
Let's move on to item number three. Our presentation on recommended changes for the boards and commissions. I'll let Sergeant Service, your city clerk, Valvee Shubert, go with the presentation.
Okay, y'all. I'm gonna try to race through this as quick as possible just to allow some time for questions and discussion. Back before, yes, back before you to talk again about boards and commissions. It's been a little bit, so just a refresher, recap of our timeline. We heard from you all a desire to once again, take a look at our boards and commissions, just trying to find some areas where we can strengthen and support them. So we brought before you in February 2025 at your workshop, a presentation just outlining a process to take a look. And we asked for the formation of a smaller subcommittee of the city council. Just want to say really quickly right here, thank you to our subcommittee members, Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, council members Blackburn and Scully. We took March 2025 just to take some feedback in, again, realizing that there are a lot of people that have a hand in boards and commissions. So I thought it was very valuable to get the feedback from everyone involved, you all, the commission members and from the staff that supports them. And then from April until August, on a monthly basis, we met with the subcommittee. You all had some peer discussions. And that is why we are before you today, just to present you with some of the proposals. It's important to understand again, just a refresher, the types of boards that we decided to dial in and take a look at. We were analyzing your advisory boards. Advisory boards are the ones that you all have the most control over. I've got them listed right here. Won't necessarily go through each one, listing them again, trying to get through this presentation. But if nothing else, one thing I would like you to note on this slide is the creation date. And it's important also to realize the mindset that we took going into this process. These were the questions that we would ask ourselves. One, is the board, a commission, are they still valid? You know, the, the reason, the purpose why they were created? Is that what they're being used for today? Are they, are they producing the expected results? Are there other ways to maybe get that type of engagement that you all are looking for? And ultimately, is this a good use of the volunteers' time and efforts? So we're gonna launch right in. I would just ask again, just trying to get through the slides, if you would just note down any kind of questions that you have until the end. This is a group project. So either myself, the city manager, or anyone that was involved on the subcommittee will help and chime in. So just going in alphabetical order, we have the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. The first thing was very evident to us, just going over the discussion points, we found that they are actually very limited on their abilities. It's important to note here, anything that is done on affordable housing on that front is really set by you all, the mayor and council. You all provide that direction. You set the goals and you give it to staff and staff does the work. Now, there are some things that will still go before the Affordable Housing Loan Committee, such as subrecipient grant applications, down payment assistance. But really, a lot of that work is done on the backend by staff. And the reason why it's like that is just to ensure that consistency, making sure that we remain, we're not partial in any way when we are deciding, one, who will get granted these awards and how much we're gonna allocate. So by the time it gets to the commission, unfortunately, they're very limited on what they can do. So it's more or less like a rubber stamp by that point. And we don't feel like that is the best use of their time. It's also worth noting that sometimes having to wait for a, a board meeting can actually hinder the applicants. We have seen situations where you kind of need that agility and fluidity, just go ahead and make these decisions. And unfortunately, because we are, excuse me, subject to open meeting rules, having to wait for a board meeting can kind of hinder the public in that way. So via our recommendation to, one, dissolve the Affordable Housing Loan Committee, but want to point out in its place, we would be sure staff would coordinate efforts and opportunities, just again, to get that public expression and to provide the education related to affordable housing and to form task committees as needed. Moving on, we have the Environmental Advisory Commission. Again, one thing to note is the creation date, this board was created in 1975. The city of Greenville has come a long way since then, including the expansion of the city and also the hiring of technical experts, thus decreasing the need for that technical expertise on the board. In a way, that's an opportunity for us because we can soften those membership requirements just to open it up and make it so that if you have an interest in environmental issues, then you are free to apply. So it's our recommendation, just to soften up that membership. Again, noting that it is nice to have the technical expertise, but it is not going to be required. Next, we have the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. I have combined these two boards onto one slide just because they're similar in the sense of we take a very light touch with these two boards because there are some statutory requirements in place. Hence, the very light touch. There are certain things that only they can do, so we need them in place. We'll say, though, we were looking at the feedback received by the boards and saw that there were some current concerns about the preliminary plat approval process. It's our understanding that those measures are being considered right now by the state. So it'd be our recommendation just to wait and see kind of how that shakes out, what comes out of that. I also would like to note that the planning staff is working with a consultant on the design guidelines. So the recommendation here would be no structural changes, but just wait and see the results from the state and from the consultant. Next, we have the Human Relations Council. And so I would say, the thing that really caught our attention here when it can't, when it can't, when it comes to the HRC, is just the sheer size of it. You can see 18 members. I mean, this is, you all are a group of seven and it can be difficult just to coordinate meetings, coordinate events. That was the main takeaway from that discussion is just that 18 members can be a little unwieldy. It was also noted that it was difficult at times to attain a quorum. So it'd be our recommendation just to kind of help on that front, to reduce the size of the board. We'll get into the specifics about how far to trim down a little bit further into the presentation. Next, we have the Multimodal Transportation Commission. This is the baby of the group. It was just formed in 2020. We would say that they are doing a pretty good job. It was noted during our discussion that they were instrumental in helping the city to obtain a sidewalk grant. We'll say, though, that there was some discussion had at our subcommittee meetings about the scope of the board and if it was maybe too broad. But ultimately, where we landed at was that the scope, just because transportation is so interconnected, the scope of the board would be appropriate. We also heard a desire from the board about, a desire from them to meet a little bit more frequently. Currently, right now, they meet every other month. And so it's our recommendation just to inform the Multimodal Transportation Commission about their abilities to form subcommittees and set their own meeting schedule. And again, a little note here about changing the length of the terms. Next, we have the Neighborhood Advisory Board. And so it should be noted that they have been inactive for the past two plus years. They have not been able to meet. Now, they are a little bit different in the sense of you all don't make appointments to this board. The structure's a little bit different. You guys are a little bit more hands-off. However, I would say, it's our opinion, subcommittee, we talked about this, that this could be considered a success story. Just because, you know, they understand, like we understand that strong neighborhoods build a strong community. And I think that's very evident. You can see that from the city, us realizing that with the creation of a whole department devoted to just that, the Neighborhood and Business Services Department. They actually overlap and their goals and their work actually overlap a lot with the Neighborhood Advisory Board. So it's our recommendation to dissolve the Neighborhood Advisory Board and in its place, have staff coordinated opportunities such as neighborhood symposiums and other like opportunities on a regular basis. Next, we have the Police Community Relations Committee. Not a lot of changes proposed here, but one thing that we were talking about with the subcommittee was just the need for a little bit of consistency as to why we do some of the things that we do. Some of the structure is not consistent and in line with our other boards and commissions. So really, the recommendation here would be just to build in that consistency, change the appointment structure. Right now, it's a direct appointment. So we would propose that we change that to an appointment by majority vote and change the length of the Next, we have the Recreation and Parks Commission. We did hear some concerns expressed by staff about the difficulties in attaining a quorum. Luckily, they were able to meet, but it's a little nerve-wracking not being able to confirm that you're gonna have a quorum until the date of the meeting. There was also a desire expressed to see more dedicated, formalized time for board discussion during the meetings. But I would like to note that there are opportunities there for the board members to offer their feedback and make comments. Usually, it's done after staff reports. But still, we understand, the subcommittee expressed the desire to see that a little bit more formalized. So it's our recommendation to reduce... So it's our recommendation to reduce the membership on the board to help with those quorum issues, and add a board discussion to the monthly agenda. And next, we have the Youth Council. This will kind of round us out and be the last of the boards that we discuss. Unfortunately, the work, the mission of the Youth Council's not exactly in line with what we see today. And again, the size of the board was one of the main things that we were focused on. 20 members can make it very hard, I use the word unwieldy, can make it very hard to just manage and coordinate efforts, and also to achieve quorum. So it's our recommendation here, and Assistant City Attorney Danae Alexander has been working a lot and talking with Neighborhood and Business Services Director Tiana Berryman about shifting the model of our Youth Council. Changing it from what we currently have to like a leadership youth training opportunity. It's also our recommendation to reduce the size of the Youth Council. Oh, wait, city manager's office. My bad, y'all know what I meant. You know my heart. Sorry, sorry.
Hey, thanks for the mellow. Do a great job.
All right, thank you. All right, so next, we have our general structural recommendations. This one might be a little hard, but that's why we printed out these slideshows, so maybe it might make more sense if you got it right in front of you. But again, the reoccurring theme throughout our discussions was just the need to, one, build in opportunities for diversity and representation on the board, but also try to standardize some things just to make it make sense. So one of those things that came up in those discussions was our cooling off period. Right now, currently, cooling off periods are, a member can serve two full terms, and they must hit out for one year, that's the cooling off period. However, we find that maybe that's not enough that we're doing just to ensure the turnover of membership, so we have a proposal here. Would like to note that a majority of the subcommittee was in favor, maybe not necessarily a consensus, but a majority, in favor of this proposal. Right. So.
Guess which was the one that did not.
So it's the proposal of the subcommittee for an initial cooling off period that would be equivalent to one year after someone has served a full term. Subsequent cooling off periods would be a period that's equivalent to the length of a term, and under this proposal, there would be no term limits. So that is a lot, and I'm visual, so we just have like a little chart right here, just to kind of help to organize that, and hopefully make it make a little bit more sense. Again, first term, let's just use the example of a board that has three-year terms, first term would be three years, you serve that, you come off for one year. If you're reappointed again, it's again, three years, but now, the cooling off periods, as you can see, are equivalent to three years. And again, this is just to ensure the turnover of membership and to provide additional chances for others to serve.
And another change that went with the previous slide is you can only serve one term under these proposals, which, again, the two out of 40 people agree on that, so I know we'll have discussion, but that was another kind of structural change, yeah, to one year.
Again, just trying to make things make sense, and just trying to standardize some things across the board here, a few measures that we thought would be good, just to build in that consistency, taking this opportunity. Number of members, it's the proposal of the subcommittee to have all of the boards except for the ones noted right here, HPC and Planning and Zoning, just because, again, statutory requirements, light touch, but the rest of these boards to trim them down to seven members. Length of terms, we're proposing term lengths be equivalent to three years, just because that seems to be kind of across the board, the length of terms. Nominations, that's a pretty big change, and instead of just the city council liaison to that board making the nominations, we thought, again, just trying to build in that representation across the community, it might serve us a little bit better to have the mayor and council have an assigned nomination on each one of those boards. An appointment structure, again, just to keep things consistent, all appointments would be made by a majority vote of the city council. So again, I'm visual, and I just have like a little table here, let's take a look first at the number of members. You can see that there's a few that would change. HRC would go from 18 to seven, Rec and Parks would go from nine to seven, Youth Council would go from 20 to seven. Length of terms, a few changes here, Multimodal Transportation Commission go from terms of two years to terms of three years. PCRC, Police Community Relations Committee, go from terms of two years to three. Youth Council, though, you'll note that that stayed at one, we just think that for that proposed model, it makes more sense to keep those at one-year terms. And then here, the changes highlighted and read about nominations and appointment structures, you can see changes and read, the Environmental Advisory Commission, Human Relations Council, Multimodal Transportation Commission, and the Youth Council would shift to a model where changing from city council liaison, making all those nominations to assigned nominations for the entire mayor and city council. Other change I'd like to highlight would be the Police Community Relations Committee, changing from a direct appointment made by council to a majority vote. There are a couple of other things that were talked about that can be implemented on the staff side, still felt it was worth sharing. The first point was the timing of planning retreats for advisory boards, so we think it's only appropriate that the advisory boards build their work plan and their goals around the city council's goals and priorities. So the timing should occur in February and March. This is something, though, again, that can be achieved on the staff side. City manager's office has put out administrative procedure, drafting this change into there, just to let the staff liaisons know kind of when they should plan on having their retreats. The other point that got brought up a lot, and quite heavily, was opportunities for engagement, just making sure that we are very intentional about connecting these pieces. There's a lot of events that we coordinate and we help to co-sponsor, just making sure that our boards and commissions have the opportunity maybe to join in, allowing them to kind of feel more folded in into city government, but also allowing them, just to kind of amplify the work that they're doing and their message. And this is not really under the umbrella of your boards and commissions, but this is something that you requested at that February workshop, and that's just some information and a procedure for your ENC Alliance Board of Directors. So just going through the membership composition, currently, you have three voting members on that board, that's appointed by the mayor and council. There's also a city council liaison, city council liaison does not vote, they are also appointed by the city council. Right now, we bring those to you every year, and it's usually the first one that can speak or shout out their nomination, and usually that's who gets appointed to the board. So we recognize that there needs to be a little bit of structure there, so working with the city attorney's office, a recommendation just to implement a rotating schedule to nominate those three voting members, and again, for the sake of consistency, it would be our recommendation that the mayor assigns the city council liaison to the board of directors, just like the mayor assigns, makes assignments to city council advisory boards. Ooh, yes. So next. I've been so shaky up here. Next steps, I'm feeling really good now. Next steps would be to take any kind of questions, gather your feedback tonight, and then bring you back something hopefully at the October 6th meeting that you can consider and adopt.
Good job.
Val has done an outstanding job from all this together.
Yeah, I'd like to, it's been a group project.
I'd like to commend Valerie and all our staff who participated on this, because we really did, we had some very vigorous discussions about this, and just a couple of points I want to make, just to provide context for our conversation. One of the goals that I had for being on this subcommittee was that, my concern was that our boards and commissions, in many cases, they had outlived their usefulness, they had accomplished their goals, and so really, no longer didn't need to be there like the Neighborhood Advisory Board, they are a victim of their own success. And some of the other boards, I felt with, for instance, Recreation and Parks, that they needed more opportunity to engage, to have a conversation, and that maybe wasn't happening, and so I think we really addressed that in a big-picture way. We set, we also had just a conversation about community events, where our boards and commissions can be directly engaged, and I think that is another very positive kind of, just a shift, kind of a culture shift, because one of the things I think has happened, and maybe one of the reasons we can't, these boards haven't made quorum, is because they haven't been focused on what exactly their role is, and how they are useful, and how they can be of service and change our community. So we did that, and had some good conversations about that. Couple of things, though, that I wanted to talk about that I'm still not convinced of. One is that we, a key change is that we said you can only serve one term, that's one of the proposals, that you can only serve one term, you can't be reappointed. I really have mixed feelings about that, because if we're saying, on the one hand, we have an issue with not making quorum, we got folks who want to serve a second term because they love what they're doing, I have mixed feelings about saying we're only going to let you serve one term.
On that particular board.
And then I feel like the cooling off period, if it's one year, let it just be one year, and don't get into sometimes it's three years, and sometimes it's one year. And then last, we, specifically when we talk about Recreation and Parks Commission not making quorum, one of the reasons that it hadn't made quorum is because two seats have been held open for a long time, and still, they've been held to the larger board's quorum. So that's, I don't want Rec and Parks to feel picked on, they've had some special circumstances to deal with. And then last, I really want to hear from Portia about the Youth Council and how, because that's a huge change that is being proposed there, and I'm not sold on it, but I'd like to hear from Portia.
Okay, thank you, Mary. You're up, Portia. Okay, so for the Youth Council, some things that I liked were the progress that I've seen, I've been able to meet with Director Berryman and Bella, I believe it is, Bella? In terms of the direction, the new leadership there, I'm so pleased, I can't stress how pleased I am. I feel like for the meetings I've been able to sit in on, they lack the enthusiasm to go into the community and do different things, I feel like they're going to be reinvigorated and want to get in and get things done, so I'm excited about that. I think that reducing the number will help with quorum issues that we faced, and a smaller group may be more manageable, and I feel like they would be apt to get to work, as well as, I think, being able to spread our appointments out amongst council members is only fair. So being able to do that, but then along with that comes the responsibility to appoint. You know, we've got to, you know, get out there, do the work, you know, and find those young people that are excited to want to be a part of this, that have applied, and appoint them. So those are my thoughts about the Youth Council. I think serving a one-year term is reasonable, because at that high school age, you know, they're going to be constantly rotating out, and so I think I'm good with the changes as long as we can go toward that youth training model. I think the model that the chamber has, they are doing some incredible things with their teams. They've even come over and Matt and I had the opportunity and our mayor to talk to them about their Leadership Institute, give them a mock council meeting, those are the kinds of things that I feel like are tangible experiences that our young people can look at and say, oh, I could see myself in those seats, and those are the kinds of opportunities I would love to see the city be able to provide to teams that are interested, as well as some other things down the pike, but we can work on that, I think this is a great start.
And seven members, going from the 20 down to seven members, you think that's?
I feel fine with that.
Okay.
I was even recommending that if they serve their full year term, that they get some sort of certification that they can put on their college application kind of thing.
Look at you peeking into the future. I mean, that is all about the recognition and being a part of the thoughts going forward. I think our city manager has some thoughts on that, but how we can partner with Pitt County Schools to really make this something that is something that high school students want to be a part of, like, I want that, not just as a resume builder, but are able to take the experiences with them, life skills, leadership training, I mean, the sky's the limit to what we can do.
It really should be a curriculum-based appointment that you can earn like a high school credit. I think that should be a part of our long-term goal, or short-term goal.
I did have a couple other comments. Who is the liaison to the Affordable Housing Loan Committee? Is it council member? Okay, I was interested to know your thoughts about dissolving that.
Yeah, that was my first thing. Go ahead.
And I had questions about the Human Relations Council, I'm in favor of the recommendations, but one of the things that we encountered at a meeting in 2024 was, I think we were right before the election, and the council members wanted to make a statement in terms of just being civil and respecting every citizen's right to make their own decisions in a heightened election year. And they were trying to find a way just to make a blanket statement to the city, and were trying to figure out how they can maneuver to do so. And I think being able to have more clarity around that, if they have the autonomy to say something, or if they can make a presentation to us about what their recommendation is about any issue that they face, whether it was, say, with the flag recent, the flag situation recently, if they wanted to bring something to us in terms of their thoughts about how that's been handled, or how we should look at it as a city, or what have you, for them to be able to have a process by which to do that, not speaking on behalf of the council, but being able to say, council members, this is what we're seeing, and this is a message we'd like to have promoted throughout the community. One other thing, the Police Community Relations Committee, I've been really disappointed at what I've seen in attending the meetings, even down to my suggestions, being told, that's not the way we've done things, and we're not doing it that way. I'm just like, wow, okay then, all right, and not coming from the police department, but coming from the chair, and I feel like it's irrevocably broken, and I would like to see it dissolved. If not dissolved, completely revamped, because I don't feel like it is effective, and I really don't want more time and energy being put into something that's not effective and not beneficial to the citizens, especially when we're talking about something as serious as police and community relations. So those are my thoughts, thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to address, let me address first, the issue with the Human Relations Council, so I will go ahead and take that as a personal point to make sure that I'm doing a better job, that we are doing a better job, just about informing the commission members as well as the staff liaisons about the boards and commissions' policy and what they have the ability to do. So there is a communications procedure in there on how you get messages from the full council, the full board, to the city council, so it looks like, at least what I'm taking from these comments, is that maybe that's lost, and it needs to be clarified for the board, so I am taking that down as a personal note. And as far as the Police Community Relations Committee, and, you know, I don't want to tread into areas where maybe I shouldn't, because that's really more of a personnel issue for the manager and the chief, but I will say that I think there is also some room in there just to kind of clarify roles and expectations. I think we have said that multiple times, February, also today here, about how it takes a lot of us, just, you know, different roles, different players, working together. So we will also take that as a personal point of consideration, just to clarify who does what, council, the staff liaisons, as well as the commission members. So thank you for that.
No, but I know you're going to speak about PCRC, I think, we've heard this.
I was going to speak about a couple of things, but we got 15 minutes.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we might need to look at PCRC, since these concerns have been raised. Is that what they're?
So to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Will said, for the Affordable Housing Loan Committee, I disagree with that one being dissolved. My reason is that I do agree that a lot of what happens with housing is discussed amongst council and staff, but I think that citizens need to be involved with the grant-making process, and because oftentimes the grants, what's on?
What'd you say? Nothing? Oh, okay. Excuse me.
So with us distributing grants and things of that, so I think that that is a great use of citizens' time, and it is a means of checks and balances between, you know, application, staff involvement, and having a, having input from citizens, because oftentimes those people that are requesting those grants are talking about doing things within the community, and so I think that needs citizen engagement. And so I think that needs citizen engagement. So I think that there is, and I need to give that a little bit, I need to process that a little bit more, but I think that there's some good bones to that. And I also think that they're probably one of the most efficiently-run boards that we have because they come in, they do what they need to do, and they get on out. For the Environmental Advisory Commission, I was looking up the requirements, and I do agree with that after looking up the requirements. That was pretty stringent. And so, but I would, you know, want to have some input on what those requirements are.
And to your point, if I understand what we talked about was making it so they're not a requirement, but they are suggestions. They go from being a requirement to becoming a suggestion.
That's correct. Basically, you focus it up, so it says, it'd be great to have these people, but they're not bound to that. So you can put in anybody that's interested or committed or is educated or can, you know, check those boxes. They don't necessarily have to be an engineer or whatever. Open it up to anybody, but it just puts in there, hey, we recognize it's important to have these professionals in some context.
Okay, thank you. For the Neighborhood Advisory Board, I've got mixed feelings about that because I, I, and I don't think we have time to discuss it now, but I want to understand what victims of their own success is because I haven't seen where the success was, maybe in the past, but I don't see currently. I think it's just kind of, it, it kind of fell through the cracks from a community standpoint. And so I just, and I just would love a sidebar conversation on that. My thoughts, police and community relations were very similar to what Portia's were. Initially, I was going to those meetings because I had hope for how that might have some impact at the community level where it's actually needed in the communities that it's needed. And I ended up seeing it as a waste of my time because I was having to choose between that and serving. And so, you know, my default setting was to serve at the community level. But I, I think maybe a revamping, more than a communication of expectations is there. But I think something needs to be there. We need something to improve community and police relations. And that, that needs to be a priority. So dissolving it completely, I'm not sure that I agree with that, but something needs to be in place to prioritize and to, so that it's communicated that community and police relations is important to us because we don't have, it's not where it needs to be. Youth Council, I agree with spreading the appointments out. As far as the training is concerned, I agree with that to some level, but in my mind, I'm thinking it might end up like everything else in high school, that it becomes a who's who of high school students. And, and so, like, who ends up being part of that type of thing? And, and I do the mock council and have my own, as you know, own initiative that I do related to that, to work with students. And I am, I'm very intentional in how I do it so that it doesn't end up being one of those things. General structure, the cooling-off periods, I need to think about that a little bit. With the terms, I count it, three years may be okay, but two sounds better for me because what I found since I've been on council is that the board appointments kind of exceed council tenure, and so we really don't get to make an impact in a two-year term.
Okay, so okay with standardizing the terms, but maybe not three years. Maybe you're suggesting two years.
Uh huh, possibly. And again, I want to kneel that over, but possibly. But having it felt like, and when I think about that, I think about all the issues that we're having with the housing authority. And just feeling completely handicapped, okay?
That's a horrible feeling.
Right. And, and I felt the same way with community and police relations. It's like, you know, I came here to, I want to be a change agent and make a difference and, and be part of a solution. And that, that was just not the feeling there. And the housing authority is that on steroids.